I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you and welcome everyone. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening with the exception of Councilman Kerr. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. We're going to start the meeting out with the recognition of some of our loyal and very dedicated city employees. We on numerous occasions have held an event where it was a sit-down dinner and because of COVID, because of everything that has gone on this year, we decided to not do that this year. And to recognize them as we can, they also receive some chamber dollars. And that is something that is going to be utilized however they want to do it. Hopefully they'll take their spouse or their significant other out for a nice dinner, gentlemen. All right, so I will go down here, I'll pass out their certificates and Tobias will do the honors as far as reading who is actually going to receive them.
Thank you, Mayor. So every year we honor those who've had five, 10, 15, 20 years of experience, however it works out. So this year we'll start with those we're honoring for five years of service. The first one we have is Derek Hossick. Todd Miller is from the landfill, he's not here tonight. Frederick Naaman the fourth. Natasha Nesbit. Kylie Shone is not here this evening. Paul Valentine. And Carla Zarbinicky. For those celebrating 15 years of service with the city, we have Tracy Baer. And Bob Cobes and Corey Lineman were not available for this evening. For 20 years of service, we have Carrie McGruey. And Aaron Sadoff. And for 20 years, Brian Carver and Jim Young were not available for this evening. Celebrating 25 years, we have Jerry Justman Jr. And Mark Pethod. With 30 years of experience at the city, we have Brian Dakey. Brian McAllister. Jay Murphy.
Let's give these guys a round of applause.
We had two more at 30 years who were not able to make it tonight, Dave Warnicki and James Zarbinowski. Were not able to make it tonight, so. All right, Jim's here, or Jim Young is here.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll celebrate Jim Young. Jim Young just got off a call, didn't you, Jim?
We're going to reward you.
Jim, come on, Jim has 20 years of service with the city Beatrice, so thank you, Jim. Now, as much as we'd like all of you to stay, you don't have to, so don't feel bad if you get up and walk out, it's quite okay. Not be the first nor the last person to do so.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is approve agenda as submitted. B, receive in place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive in place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of minutes of the regular meeting on February 15th, 2021, as on file in the city clerk's office. E, approval of treasurer's report of claims. E1, approval of gauge area growth and gauge claim in the amount of $33,560.97. E2, approval of balance of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $233,212.85. Item F, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $80,005.76. G, approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts. H, award bid for the Bell Street, Fifth Street to Sixth Street Concrete Reconstruction Project, 2021 to RL Timman Construction in the amount of $137,288.79 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item I, approval of change order number one, an increase in the amount of $24,010 to Building Crafts Inc. For the WPCD watering improvements project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item J, resolution number 6687, adopting the public access policy regulating the public's access and use of city-owned buildings and the property to protect the safety of city staff and all persons visiting such buildings and property. Item K, resolution number 6688, entering into a farm lease with Justin M. Wiegand for farming purposes. And item L, resolution number 6689, entering into a farm lease between the city and Larry Delabar and Greg Delabar for pasture purposes. Is there any item that any council member wants removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Claybaugh?
Mayor, I'll abstain on item E1.
Duly noted, anybody else?
I'll abstain from number, for D, the minutes, I was not here last meeting.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? All right, Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed on the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and/or ratified. Your vote please, and that is approved 7-0. We have no public hearings this afternoon or this evening. Next is a resolution, resolution number 6690, executing the memorandum of understanding between the city, the Department of Interior, National Park Service, and the Nebraska Department of Transportation to assist in the design and construction of a hike bike trail connecting the city and Homestead National Historical Park.
I move that resolution number 6690 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that resolution number 6690 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
This is the first step of many of working to extend the city trail system from the Riverside Park out to the Homestead. What you see here tonight is basically MOU or memorandum of understanding, whereas all the parties kind of put forth some, what we're going to be working on. National Park Service has some money available to them today, which we use to help start with a preliminary design, kind of an outline of where they think this trail might be able to go to, in order to make that extension. The Nebraska Department of Transportation, they'll serve as the responsible party of this. Some of the trail may be on their right-of-way, which is why they'd be involved. And then ultimately, the city Beatrice would be the ones who own and maintain the trail out to the Homestead, and that's how our involvement comes in. We may also be the ones that then have to make the application for certain grants in the future. Just so everybody knows, we're looking at the same type of funding that you had for the last trail system. So don't anticipate this being built anytime in the next couple of years, this is a multi-year project, but this is the first step.
Questions, gentlemen?
What type of surface will that be? Would that be concrete?
That part is still to be discussed and decided. At this point, it has not been decided whether it would be chat rock or concrete or some other type of surface.
It says hard surface.
Hard surface.
Okay.
Anyone else? From the public? All right, your vote please. And that is approved 7-0. Resolution 6690 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number 6691, naming the trail beginning at the intersection of Sixth Street and Caldwell Street and ending in Hattaway Park, the Pioneer Trail.
I move that resolution number 6691 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that resolution number 6691 be passed and adopted.
Well, we thought before we start the next trail project, we should probably name the last one. So you saw Pioneer Trails, what we came up with as a name. We came up with probably 25 different options, we've thrown out there over the last six months or so, working on a name. It'll start at Sixth and Caldwell, which is the dog park, and extend then to Hattaway Park, is where this trail will take place.
Questions?
Great addition.
What's that?
Great addition.
I would agree. From the public? All right, your vote please. And that is approved 7-0. Resolution 6691 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution 6692, executing a loan agreement, promissory note, deed of trust, personal guarantee, UCC financing statement, and relating documents between the city and Yule Sporting Goods LLC, Philip Detbrenner and Karen Detbrenner, for an economic development loan totaling $189,000 for funds derived from LV840, as recommended by the Citizens Advisory Review Committee.
I move that resolution number 6692 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Tim Fraylon, that resolution 6692 be passed and adopted.
We received a LV840 loan application from Yule Sporting Goods, the Detbrenners. They're working on purchasing Yule Sporting Goods, which exists today, and making some improvements there. I'll let Phil and Karen come up and talk about those improvements. What they're asking for is a $189,000 loan, seven-year repayment period, 3% interest, and the first payment would be due in May 1st of this year. So those are the terms of the loan, and Phil, if you want to come up and talk about what you're doing and.
You can bring Karen with you if you like. She doesn't like.
Basically, what we're going to do is we're going to hopefully purchase the Yule Sporting Goods from Dave and his wife Beth, and add some things to it. We want to have more of a retail, kind of a feel to it. We're still going to do screen printing, we're going to step into embroidery, we're going to do some other things, maybe with laser printing, and hopefully expand and do some internet sales and things like that. But we just wanted to keep the Yule's name in Beatrice, and we had the opportunity, so that's where we're at.
You're going to continue to do the trophies and everything?
Oh, yes, yes, still continue the trophies and medals and everything else, so. And we've been very fortunate working with Dave and Beth on this. They've allowed us to go in and start working inside the facility and getting things ready. So when we do get in there and get going, we can go full bore, so. Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Any other questions?
Congratulations.
Gary?
Not necessarily to Phil, but a couple of them, I see that we're the subordinate position on the loan. And not about Phil's loan, but in general, do we, are most of the loans we make, are we always in a subordinate position or first position?
So what you're reading there is, if you have to go back, we did the downtown revitalization grant. In that was the city got the superior lien. Your lien will be second to the city's first lien that we already have for the downtown grant. What you're getting rid of is originally we had agreed to subordinate to another bank. That bank is no longer in the picture, and so you're removing that subordination agreement for them. And so you'll have both the first and second position. The first one is for your grant application, as long as they don't remove the improvements in the first couple of years. That ultimately gets forgiven, and then the second will be this actual loan.
Does our part of the loan run parallel with the first lender as far as the length of term?
The first lender is us. We're the lender of both of them.
So we're subordinating?
We're not subordinating, we're getting rid of the subordination. You had agreed to subordinate months ago, that's out of the picture, you're getting rid of that clause.
Okay.
We're the only financier in the picture.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Anyone from the public? All right, your vote please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution 6692 has been passed and adopted, congratulations. Next is an ordinance, an ordinance amending section 2-362 of the Beatrice City Code regarding the Beatrice Community Redevelopment Authority.
I move that said ordinance be given number 21-9, the title thereof be approved and rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number 21-9, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, your vote please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance number 21-9 by number the first time, ordinance 21-9 by number the second time, and ordinance 21-9 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 21-9 be passed and approved.
Second, moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Fraylon, that ordinance number 21-9 be passed and approved. Tobias?
In a recent review of our city code, what we found was that, well, first off, the CRA is the Citizens Review Committee, they're the ones who oversee TIF applications. In a recent review of our city code, what we found was our city code set a quorum, it's a five-member board, a quorum resulted in four. Statute said a quorum was three, and so we had a conflict, and so we're simply removing the quorum requirement out of your city code, so it falls back to state statute and being three members, three out of five.
Cleans things up a little bit. Questions? Public? All right, your vote please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance number 21-9 has been passed and adopted. Next is the public forum, purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum? All right, next we go into discussion and reports regarding sanitation department bond issuance review. And with us from Piper Sandler and Company is Jay Spearman. Jay, come on up and you can have a seat, I kind of moved those chairs around.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. We were in the market last week with the city's $2,730,000 revenue bonds. Had a really good sale, most of those bonds were sold to the local financial institutions. I believe out of the $2,730, there was only a couple hundred thousand that was not sold locally. The average interest rate on the revenue bonds was 1.143%. Keep in mind, that's for a 10-year repayment cycle. And your all-inclusive costs, once you factor in the interest rate as well as the costs associated with issuing the bonds, the all-inclusive cost was 1.328%. Your average annual principal and interest payment for the 10 years is $290,242. We will close on these bonds at the end of the month, March 30th, and that's the day we'll wire transfer the net proceeds to the city. As well as, that's the day then interest starts to accrue on the bonds. These bonds are like all your bonds that you've issued in the past, where they'll have a five-year call period on them, meaning that those bondholders know that they're going to lease on them for five years. Anytime on or after that, it's up to the city, whether you leave them outstanding or call them in and refinance them or pay them off. That's all I have, Mayor.
Questions of Jay?
I don't have a question for him, I got a question for Tobias. So our bond history, we've never extended, have we?
What do you mean never extended?
At the end of the five-year period, and we had the chance after seven to have to extend them, we've never had that issue, have we?
No, I mean, the bonds will be, they're up to, what, 10-year bonds, I believe that they are. You can call them early, which means you can pay them off sooner. We've done some refinancing, something like that in the past, I don't know if we've ever actually just called them in.
You do have the ability after the end of the five years, you could call them in and then instead of amortizing, re-amortizing them over five years, you could potentially extend that out if necessary, if that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, it's just more internal, I just wondered if we'd ever had to do that before, and I, and I don't.
Not that I can.
I don't recall, and I just.
We've refinanced.
We've refinanced bonds, we've advanced refinanced bonds, which I'm not allowed anymore. We've done some of those things, but.
Yeah, but that was a money saver.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Don't get much lower than this.
No, you don't get much lower than that.
I don't know, well, we'll see if Jay can work his magic and get them lower here in five years.
Any other questions of Jay?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Jay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other questions? Anyone from the public? All right, your vote please. Oh, there's no vote. Next is our Police Department Annual Report, Chief Lang.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present our 2020 Annual Report for the Beatrice Police Department. As you can imagine, 2020 was a challenging year for all of us. For the law enforcement community, it was also a bit unusual. Our call load was down somewhat based on, you know, just people being quarantined, being at home war, businesses being closed, and all the things that associate with activity. Activity generates police activity, and so since those things were reduced, our numbers were down a little bit for 2020. Probably the thing I wanted to bring to everyone's attention today or talk just briefly about is our mental health calls. Mental health issues in our community, in our state, and in our nation are significant. Our police officers are assessing two people out of every three days roughly for serious mental illness and making assessments whether those people are a danger to themselves or others, and acting accordingly. It's something that, in visiting with the schools, they're seeing a tremendous amount of mental health issues, and that spills over into the kind of things that our police officers are dealing with every day. And it seems like it's certainly not getting better, it's getting worse. And so it's a challenge. To say that we're not trained properly, I guess would leave the impression that we don't train on it, we do. But it's hard for a police officer at 2:00 in the morning to be able to handle some of the mental illness issues that we're dealing with. And so that's a challenge for us, it's a challenge for all of my other fellow officers across the country. So it's one of those things, I don't know the answer, I just know the question. And that is, what do we try to do to make that better in our country? And I don't know that answer, but it's something that spills over and we're dealing with on a pretty significant basis as far as numbers. Raw number about 200 times in 2020. Our police officers were evaluating someone to see if they were mentally ill and dangerous to themselves. That's a pretty big number in a community size. In addition, on a brighter note, we have had a couple losses of employees this year, they were significant. Our victim assistance coordinator, after 20 years, has been hired away by a seunderal within the city. Actually, she made a career change, and that's, we're real supportive of her. You know, I come here, last few years, we talked about the large number of victim services we provide. It's mind-boggling, we're still seeing, you know, 750 to 800 new victims of crime that we're dealing with and supporting and providing services for, and so we're in the process of replacing that position here in the next couple of weeks. And then we just, this last week, lost a long-time night sergeant Doug Coon, has been with us over 20 years, and he's also made a career change. You know, this business does somewhat wear on you. I used to be six foot six before I started, so just let you know a little bit what it's like. So anyway, those are some of the things that we're dealing with, and when you lose employees, it does allow for new promotions, that's somewhat healthy and gives people chances to move up in the organization. And so that's a positive, but you certainly hate to lose experience that we're losing like here. And then the last thing I'll touch on is, we take a lot of pride in our community relations and community service projects that we do. And 2020, because of the pandemic, prevented us from doing those things. And we're really itching to get back at those, our Lunch with a Cop program, our Community Connection program, just the different things that we do like that around in our community. We really miss being able to do that and interact with the community, and so we're hoping in 2021 we get this thing behind us so we can get back out there and feel like we can get better connected with our community. So that's kind of one of our goals for the year. With that, I'll stop, and I got a lot going on here a little bit, so be glad to answer any questions you might have.
I just had a quick question on the mental health thing. When you make those calls, where do you transport patients that need, you know, extra care? Do they go to the layman or?
Well, it's a great question. We have a, we actually have a pretty good network right now of what we can do with people that are in crisis. We have, we have the opportunity to use a service called TASK, T-A-S-C, and that is on-call mental health professionals that we hook up with remotely. And they actually, we have, we carry a laptop computer and we can dial into these guys, and they're there 24/7. And they will visit, privately visit with those people and kind of give us some feedback as to how critical the crisis is that they're in, what they best recommend, we work with those folks, that's been really positive. The Beatrice Community Hospital has developed a telehealth element with mental health. And so they're able to work with Bryan Hospital and with their mental health professionals, so that's another option for us. And then if, and in Nebraska, if a person is deemed to be a danger to themselves or others, a police officer then can have that person committed and evaluated for 72 hours. We're the only ones that can do that, a doctor can't do it, it's the craziest thing ever, but it comes back in our lap. But we can do that, and we have a contract with a service in Lincoln at Bryan Hospital. So we do take folks up there as well on an involuntary basis. That's kind of our last resort there. So those are kind of the three things that we deal with, or the options we have when we have those kind of situations.
Gary?
Chief, just as your statistics go for the general population of our community, I know people that work in our school system that deal with some of these things too. And does that run parallel to what our general population's doing? Or what have you seen on calls to even sadly our grade schools when they need officers? Is that increased or decreased? Does that kind of go with everything else that we have going on in Gage County or Beatrice?
Well, it's, a parallel is a good analogy there, most definitely. You know, we work really, really close with the schools, the folks that we're dealing with, with our school resource officers. They get those reports in the mornings of things that are going on, that tips them off that, hey, you know, we might have an issue there. Mom or dad had some problems the night before, they can work with the kids, or the kid had a problem the night before, then they can work with the school, and if the school issues has, or they have some issues at school, they work with us. So it's pretty seamless like that, that's a good thing. But they're seeing, the first thing that the principals will tell you, whether it be elementary, middle school, or high school across the country, is that mental health issues are really difficult to handle and pretty prevalent.
Thank you.
Ted?
Two things. First, as I read through the report and your traffic, so you're from, compared to the last couple of years, your warnings versus citations, the percentages, you're still giving out far many, far more warnings than you are citations, but that's trending upwards, and I, the ratio is getting closer, and it's just noticeable. I know that's an officer's discretion, but I just wondered if you had a, if you had any reason for that? And then I have one other question.
As a police officer, a former police officer, you know that somewhat fluctuates with the experience of the officers. As they've been down the road a few more times, they may be a little more, have a little more favorable discretion, I should say, that maybe as they go on and they've seen more things and they can put more things in priority. That's part of it, but another part of it is, especially this last year, when we didn't, just didn't do as much traffic enforcement, because there was a period of time when we were not doing minor offenses just because of the contact issue. And so we didn't obviously make a public announcement of that, but, you know, we cut back our enforcement just because of that. So what that means is then you would see, if they did stop somebody, it was probably a little bit more serious than what you would see maybe at another time. If that makes sense?
Yeah, no, it did, and there was a time period in there, there was a lot less traffic.
Yeah, no doubt about it.
Yeah.
No doubt about it.
Yeah, for some, from somebody that drives around. Yeah, for some, from somebody that drives around every day. So the other thing is, is it kind of touched on the same mental health thing that the other guy, that Mike and Gary mentioned. You know, I noticed you said in the report, there was about 180 calls for, you know, that were suicidal, that they had to make that determination or could have, and that kind of goes to where your two, number, your 200 is, but in your report is about 180. I noticed that the amount of time and effort and training and tactical support you have, you know, you listed that on, you know, for your React team, your SWAT team. And I, and I understand that that's, you know, sexier, but would the time for your officers be better spent instead of training for that, training for your mental health thing?
We...
I mean, I think from just, you know, resources.
I know exactly what you're saying.
Okay.
And we, each year, we set out a training calendar for the year, and getting training, the, getting training, mental health training for police officers that would be tailored towards what we do and how, it's really hard to find. And we, you know, when we set that, we know those numbers, and we knew this number was going to be big. We start tracking this last January, because I just had an inkling that this was going to be a pretty big number. So as we go forward in this next year, we'll absolutely search out any and every mental health training that we can get for the officers that we can find. And been, my experience has been finding good training like that is very difficult. Finding training is not that difficult. Finding good training for that is difficult, but, you know, you're 100% correct in that we need to make sure we tailor our training and our education of our officers towards those things that our community's dealing with, and that's, mental health is certainly one of them.
You have 180 calls for service in this area, you have four in this area.
Correct.
And you're spending the enormous amount of time and training in this.
No doubt about it. No doubt about it.
Not trying to tell you how to...
I know what you're saying, and I, yep, and I agree with you.
I'm just reading the report.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Rick?
Bruce, can you talk a little bit about Safari, something that was that Officer McCormick had put together, and what that was about and everything? Safari, what was that? Can't remember. No?
I'm not sure.
Had other officers from around the country came into Beatrice and for training, and I can't remember, it's toward the, toward the end of the 43 pages, but...
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to...
All right.
Sorry.
Any other questions? Gentlemen? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the report. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move that the city, the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 7:33 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate.
Second. Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Fraylon, that we go into executive session at 7:33 for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven, zero.